...that was put into that by volunteers. We started this STEM lab in January buying and doing what we were able for courtyarders to put that door in and tie it all together. And it's a great addition to our instructional practices at the school. And I'm just happy to be a part of being able to make that happen.
That's a great thing.
We did the primary girls' and boys' bathroom. We're redoing all the hallways. That bathroom was looking pretty bad. So we were able to replace everything in those bathrooms. So it is all brand new. If you take a walk around the hallways, we redid every hallway. Primary is done in primary colors. And the 3 through 7 is done in blue and gold. I want to give Mr. Temple credit on these designs. We did a paper design. I went to tell the people who were doing our flooring what it looked like. And I think it turns out that was Jeff's problems. He worked on the weekends, painting for me. So he worked seven days a week. Less compensated, but that's above the beyond. So we're very lucky to have such help. We were also able to repaint the cafeteria. We had to repaint. And also, if you notice in here, it's been repainted also. The flooring, all the flooring was courtesy of our board supervisors, who did the capital improvement plan, and they were doing a page-a-go. So they gave us the funds to do that, and we certainly appreciate it. We redid the corridor. We cleaned it up and restained the concrete. Just because that's where the fans now live, their students. So we wanted something more hidden and more welcome. We're also able to do two classroom models here at the elementary school. And the same thing, the ceiling tiles, floor paints, the interactive monitors, tables, desks, everything was completely new. We got, oh, one of my pictures isn't showing though. We were able to paint the softball and ice ball dugouts just to freshen it up. And we're continuing on with that until fall to finish up that area. We were able to do the bus loop here. And the pampas were supposed to be painted today, but it rained. So we still have that to do. Again, with funds through our page-a-go, we were able to redo the gym roof, the cafeteria roof, and the hallway that goes around. And it was, it was two days after they finished, we had this huge downpour. First thing I did was get my car, come down here and load it.
Yeah.
And there's a tin tier warranty on it, so there was no. Because we just replaced all the tiles in the cafeteria, so I would have never. The front of the school has been painted. So that burgundy was, we went to gold. And then a little more painting to do on the front, and trying to update the front as well. And that's all I did this year.
That's it? That's it? That's all you got?
That's all I got. I gotta tell you, this was the hardest year of our educational career, but the most, I think I've worked harder this year than I ever have in my whole career. But it didn't have to be much.
A lot of great accomplishments.
Well, and it's, you know, again, the board supervisors, your support, the community support, when everybody comes together this year.
Yeah, and it really shows your care for students. Again and again, I hear you say, "It's for the kids." And I just love hearing you say that, and I think you're a little proud.
Well, thank you. And it is for all of us. You know, the teachers are important too. But ultimately, the students who walk through that door, I feel like it's a place to take care of. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks for your work.
I think we could get so much done in one summer.
That's a lot.
I've never had that. I've been here 14 years, and I think we got done more than four in that one summer that I'm seeing happen in 14 years. So thank you, Dr. Walton, and everybody who helped get all that done. Now, see, I don't know if you guys can you hear me at all? Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll hold it like this, so you can hear me. Every year at this time, we do our back-to-school update. It's not showing, so just bear with me for just a second. We switch buildings and then. So we just wanted to give you an update on what happened in preparation for the school year. There's a lot that happens these previous two weeks before the year begins, so I'll just give a quick overview. Of course, we came into it, here we go. Came into it pretty nervous, because we did have a higher rate of turnover than we have seen. We were at about 12%, which is higher than we've seen in a long time. However, it's pretty consistent with across the state, which is running 12% to 14%, right? Oop, thank you, Carol. So that's where we've been, so it's warm for us. But in any event, we are really pleased to have our new teachers who came in and had our new teacher orientation on August 6th. There they are, and they're all wonderful and very happy to be here. And they bring new energy, new ideas, and they're very innovative people, so we look forward to working with them. I will point out Cathy Sigler, who's social worker, has been so busy since she started in July, already completing many home visits and working on cases. She already provided a teacher training, so she's been fantastic. So our new teacher orientation, we do quite a bit. We review our, of course, the boring stuff you have to do, the hiring and financial report, that's key to that. They get time with their principals, acclimate to the school community. Headwaters provided them with a lunch. They go over all their technology pieces that they need to manage their classrooms, and grade books, and all their webpages and things. We have an overview of the OKAS Anti-Bullying Program. Of course, we have our academic expectations, and we go through what's, those are the things like pacing guides, and benchmarking, and lesson planning, and all those things are very important to the delivery of instruction. Special education training, there's always new laws governing that, so teachers really need to be on the up and up about how to implement accommodations and what a system looks like here. And then we also have our fabulous Alice training, which is always, it's very difficult. And new teachers who come in sometimes, you know, have trouble with that. However, this time, you know, we have a different generation coming up. So this is the world we live in now, which is a sad thing to say. But they were very pleased that we're able to do this, and they felt very empowered. Alice training, of course, is our active shooter training in case the unthinkable happens in our school. We want to empower our teachers to know what to do in those situations, and it's very different from the traditional lockdown and just sit and wait. Options on how to survive, and it's good for life too, anywhere you are. If you're at the Walmart, or at the concert, or anything. So it's great training, it's physical, it's heavy, but unfortunately, it's one of those things we feel we really need to do. Convocation was August 7th. All the teachers came back, ready to go. And we did something different this year. So for convocation, in the past, we're always scrambling to try to find a great keynote speaker. Last year, Commit to Be Fit was able to bring Patch Adams here, which was really great. Well, for some of us who didn't have to get into big care of underwear, another story. But, so we decided to try to change it up a little, because those things are difficult. You never know what you're gonna get sometimes. So what we did was start a new tradition, and that was thanks to Karen Samborn, who helped work as a teacher leader in professional development last year. Worked with our teachers and surveyed them about what they wanted. And, you know, we just realized we have such a veteran staff and such expertise on staff already, wouldn't it be neat if we started a tradition where we selected one of our master teachers, nobody knows who that convocation speaker will be, and they leave the convocation suite? It's sort of a surprise every year. So Laney Vickers, a 5th grade teacher, got that honor. She's been with the school system 34 years? 34 years? So she had some great anecdotes to tell, and some really great professional development. She's sort of a rite of passage in Rappahannock County Elementary to make it through. So, and it was just such a surprise to many of our teachers. She did a fantastic job. As part of the convocation, all of us were given new lanyards and told to write affirmations about things that we aspire to, or inspire us, or we're good at, and write it on the back of our badges. So we have our little sayings back there that we can look at as we reflect on as we go through the year. So that was great. Headwaters provided us lunch on the convocation day. Thank you so much for that, that was fantastic. And then Path Foundation provided the Luther trucks for Ice Creek for the staff. So that was wonderful as well. So teachers definitely felt appreciated. 8th grade orientation happened on August 8th. That's always a nice way that we spend a little extra time with our 8th graders. That's a big transition when they go as the big dogs in the 7th grade hallway to the high school as 8th graders. So we had a special orientation for them. We also held professional development activities on August 8th and 9th. And we also, when we surveyed teachers last year, we found that it's really difficult at the beginning of the year to get ready, get in the mindset, get the classrooms ready, get ready for back-to-school night, and then have all this training I've got to sit through. Right? So we really limited onsite professional development and did more with our online professional development modules. So teachers could get their required training, but go through online modules at their own pace, at their own time. So teachers had the option to work on this at home on weekends, and they got it a little bit earlier, so they were able to complete it. So of those things, Restored Justice, Youth Mental Health First Aid, Understanding Managing Classroom Behaviors with our school social worker. And then online, we have Alice Refresher Online Modules that all staff have to certify every two years. Title Line Training, Trauma-Informed Schools. That's the way pretty much everything is going now with what we know about the brain and the mental health, and how traumatic incidences and adverse childhood experiences affect adults and affect children at different developmental stages. And how important it is to know what those red flags are and intervene early to build resiliency in those children, and they become more productive and more adaptable girls. So we're going to be doing a lot with that this year. And then, of course, employee handbook, that goes through all the changes you have to certify. So that was our professional development. Meet the Teacher Night, last night. It was really successful. Jimmy Swindler actually gave a study skills workshop to high school parents and students. That was very well received. We gave bus tours. We did something a little different than having a jumpstart because of our numbers and things, and the teachers just thought, you know, it's easier to bring them in on those first couple of days anyway, and it just works better. So they came up with the idea to actually have little bus tours at different times throughout the evening, just so the little ones could get on the bus and see what that feels like. And the kids really did love it. So that was our back-to-school, but special thanks to Headwaters Foundation, who's with us every step of the way, providing lunch and support, and letting teachers know about the grants available to them. Path Foundation, Luther Truck is always very well received. Rappahannock County Clergy Association provided a special appreciation lunch as well on our professional development day, very much appreciated as well. Commit to Be Fit, Rap Flow for everything they've been doing and helping us. And of course, our amazing custodians, I cannot say enough about them, because they are scrambling through these hallways getting it done. And they, it was so neat to talk to Mr. Rockins down here, our daytime custodian, because he's like, "I've had this vision for years, to see the building come to life." And he just came in with a smile and working those 14, 15-hour groups, like coming in on weekends and just to make it perfect for the kids. It was amazing. So special thanks to everyone who made it happen. Any questions about back-to-school events? That we've been doing the last couple of weeks amongst all of the construction and all that going on.
Ready for tomorrow.
We are ready for tomorrow, yes. It'll be the best year ever, that's what he keeps saying. At this time, I'd like to invite the Commit to Be Fit team to give you their annual update about where the program has been and what we're doing this year. So Commit to Be Fit team, it's Jackie Teager, Holly Jenkins, Mandy Grove. Yes, my handout for you.
Okay, so we have a Year Two booklet, or the Commit to Be Fit program. And, can you scoot over?
No.
No?
You've got to quit laughing.
So the booklet that I have, we have given this school board is our Year Two program from last year. We probably didn't last year, this year will be our Year Three. So. So our leaders here, as C2BF team, I think you probably know most of them, Mandy and Holly and myself and Dr. Grimsley, and then Jen, she's our ABL Coordinator. We have an action-based learning lab in the elementary school, and she is our ABL Coordinator. We have a process of planning, so if you can see, Year One, we had inspiring, healthy role models. That was Year One. Year Two, last year, we focused on family. And this upcoming year, Year Three, we're really gonna try to focus on changing community cultures in the building on this year as we get along. So cafeteria, Mandy?
Here are some of the changes for this past school year in the cafeteria. We focus on accessibility, because we believe every child deserves access to healthy meals, including fresh and local, as well as nutrition education, to lead a healthy life. So of the total produce purchased, 14 came from local vendors. That includes adding two new vendors, Local Food Hub and Essex Farm Market. Local Food Hub came today in celebration of our local watermelon welcome for students tomorrow. They'll get a slice of watermelon from our Virginia farm. And then we also, in partnership with many community organizations, we have distributed pop-ups, Power of Produce. We've given those to our students, as well as families in the community, and they can be redeemed at the new farmer's market here in Sperryville, as well as Warrenton and the Plains Farmer's Market. And then our intern, she did educational programming there at the farmer's market over the summer. To incorporate, greater focus on accessibility, the high school salad bar was increased from two days a week to every day. We changed the model of breakfast, where it's now a second chance breakfast. And Jimmy's nodding his head because he has seen the success we've had over there at Numbers. And we know when students are fed, they learn better. We also added another water fountain at the high school. It was a wonderful problem to have, that the one in the gym hallway was used all the time. So we added it strategically on the other side of the building, closer to the academic classrooms. This is our second year now, start this now is the start of the second year. Then we have our free reduced meal application available online, which has helped us reach more eligible families. And then we continue to do classroom and cafeteria education.
So if you're not familiar with the Commit to Be Fit program, we have three prongs, cafeteria, classroom, and community. So at the classroom, we have the Action-Based Learning Lab down the hallway here. And it's our BrainStar Action-Based Learning Lab. And BrainStar, it's what we call our kids when they come in. This is, will be our third year. We did a pilot for half a semester, I mean, for a semester. And then classrooms are full for a year, full year of the Action-Based Learning Lab. And really, we focused on building more relationships and them creating that cultural movement and learning. So now we're trying to, this year, our focus is gonna be trying to push into the classrooms and focus on reading. That's kind of a push down here in elementary school. So really excited about that. We'll still have the Action-Based Learning Lab, they'll still come in as a rotation this year, K through 4. And then also Jen and I, and the team as well, will try to push into the classrooms and try to focus on our reading. So that's our Action-Based Learning Lab. And then last year, we debuted our neuromatium at the high school. And it's just an alternative seating classroom. And teachers can come in and bring their classes in and teach their content. And it helps with movement and learning together. Gets the fidgets out, kids that, you know, struggle with sitting at a desk. They like to come in, and we have platters, we have pedal desks, we have desks that move up and down, we have wobble chairs. So the whole concept, the kids learn better when they're moving, and the brain won't shut down as much. That content kind of flows into the brain. And we surveyed our students, and they loved it. It was really deceptive. And then last year, we also, we made some deaves into the classroom as well. And we would go into, teachers would invite us then. They would give us a strand, SOL strand, or some kind of content, and we would put movement and learning with that. And the kids really enjoyed it, as you can see from the pictures. It really worked well too with test review and that kind of thing when you want to. So it strengthens our cognitive skills.
Jackie and I co-teach an elective at the high school, nutritional personal fitness, and we really just want to prepare students to lead a healthy lifestyle once they are out of school. So we took them on a field trip. We took them to the Wharf, where they were able to shop at the Wednesday Farmer's Market, as well as participate in the Aqua Tone and Tread class. Of our students that participated in the class, they were all our male students, which the ladies in the Aqua TNT class love. And they asked if we were gonna be back the next Wednesday. And then the picture on the far right, we really want to be intentional and meet students where they are. And as we know, our youth love social media. So we have incorporated some positive health messaging with some of our social media campaigns, using our students to serve as peer educators.
All right, so our third prong is community. And this is a picture here of one of our classes. We'll go ahead and switch to the next slide. Okay, so for the last school year, we offered a total of 439 classes, workshops, and events throughout the school year. So we were really excited that we had, first of all, the space here to be able to offer these classes and these events, as well as the great participation from the community members. As Jackie mentioned, our first year, we really focused on creating healthy role models, because we absolutely believe that the community is really the best source of education as far as showing children how to really live a healthy lifestyle. Our second year was the helping families, so we kind of tied it all together. So this is just a list of the different classes, workshops, and events. You probably can't read a lot of it. But we did offer a nice variety, incorporate strength, cardio, as well as flexibility. We also offered a really awesome wellness workshop series this past year. And one of the things that we did was a monthly meal, meal plan, where folks would bring in an ingredient to share with the group, and we prepped the recipe, and they'd put it in a baggie to take home and prepare. And that was a huge hit, thanks to Mandy here, our nutritionist. And we also offered a lot of other really great events, such as our annual turkey trot and drums alive, which the kids had a blast, as well as the adults, lots of fun. We do offer early morning classes, as well as after-school classes and evening classes. We are participant-driven, we try to listen to the needs of our participants and our community members to best find what works for them. So we also do monthly challenges. Initially, we had done a six-month body composition change challenge, where we tracked weight and measurements and body fat percentage. And we had great success in that one. However, our participants said that they were really interested in creating some healthy changes. They necessarily didn't want to change their body composition. Hence, this past year, we switched it up to include different monthly topics. And you'll see the topics up on the screen. Participants, at the end of the challenge, had developed a lot of good, healthy behaviors from this. And we also like to really focus on staff wellness as well. Our teachers are also powerful role models for the students. And this past school year, we had divided teams that incorporated both high school and elementary teachers competing against one another. We have two captains over there, Principal Swindler and Principal Temple. Their teams are actually neck and neck. It was a very close competition.
He wanted to know why the second-place team got the prize.
Very good point, consolation prize. Very good point, but yes, the staff had a lot of fun. And we also offered fruit-fused Fridays throughout the school year, just as a little thank you for our teachers. And we had a pedal desk available in our elementary school teachers lounge. All right, so another opportunity that we had this past school year was to go on the road a little bit and present at a few local and national, as well as international conferences to speak to other school professionals about our efforts here in Rappahannock County. So this is a list of the ones that we did present at. We initially put out a lot of proposals, hoping that maybe we'd get one or two. But the response was fantastic, and Path was very generous in providing us the opportunities to go out and present. We're a team, we split it up, divide and conquer. In one day, we're in three different places. So we do have some participant feedback here. As I mentioned, we're very participant-driven, so we do really like to survey our folks. I won't go through and read this. The school board members do have our nice printed booklets that we made, and you'll find those quotes as well, so lots of more in those booklets. For the audience, we do have this available on our Commit to Be Fit website homepage. So feel free to go through the entire booklet. There's a lot of great information and adorable pictures of our students, and great pictures of our community as well. So I'd encourage you to check that out at rapc2bf.com. So next year, we're going into our third year, where we're going to be focusing on changing the community culture. We do have some big plans for this year, and as Dr. Grimsley mentioned, it's gonna be the best year yet. A few things I'll just mention, we already started by installing the sensory pathway, which is just outside this hallway here, and also the Sunshine Hallroom, or hallway, excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Temple, for allowing us to put down all those fun stickers on the floor. The kids came in last night and could just see the expressions on their face. They were so excited. We have that coming up. Our new class schedule just was launched yesterday. It's also on our website. I'd encourage all of you to check it out. We'd love to have you in our classes. And we're also, as Jackie mentioned, gonna be pushing in more into the elementary reading classes, which we're really excited about this year also. Anything else? Also, just wanted to thank the Path Foundation. We're very grateful for their generosity. They've really allowed us to accomplish so many great things here in Rappahannock. But also, thank you to you all for your support. It's very wonderful just to see the rewards when we look at the students and how they're making good choices. So thank you very much. Any questions?
I think it's having a great impact, thanks for your work.
Thank you.
It's working really good.
Thank you for your work.
And so I think it's just worth mentioning that, you know, when we started this program three years ago, and I did mention this at Budget Time, but three years running with a 0% increase in our health insurance.
Our insurance is running.
And we're part of the, we're the only district around that has that. So when you do focus on health and wellness, and really try to keep everybody healthy and aware of positive health outcomes, it can happen. So we're hoping to keep that trend going and not run into some of the issues our fellows in other school districts have dealt with these past few years with health insurance. The last report, 4.4 Crisis Management Plan, is a secret report. You can't see that in the public, because there's a law that says we don't share that for good reason. But that is our crisis management plan on how we manage all different sorts of scenarios. And it's all detailed in there. Every year, you have to review it for us, so we can certify to the school's campus safety in Virginia Center, to, we have to certify and send in some information about that. There is a lot that goes into these plans, and they're always adapted based on new information, new studies, new drills, what we're finding. Teachers have input, we have a crisis management plan team that needs every month to go through all of this. So it may change from this version as soon as next month, but we do update it as soon as possible. And I can lose the superintendent's reports.
Thank you very much. Moving on to reports, school representatives, headwaters?
Yes, I didn't attend this, you had this time's Headwaters meeting, but I'm gonna switch to a different format, which was suggested, where next week, we'll meet with the executive committee, and we'll be able to talk more about ideas, rather than just delivering a simple report at the meeting. I'm excited about the new format that came out there after their strategic planning sessions. But I'll be meeting next week with them for the first time in a month, so.
MDGS? That was easy. All right, moving on to information items. Here is. Here is Dana Morris is going to discuss a release time request.
We'd love to hear what you have to say. And I don't think we can hear most of you, so can you hear me at all? Okay, perfect. And I wrote a speech because I'm not a public speaker. So sorry for reading and not giving eye contact. I know that's a huge thing. So I want to thank you all for affording me the opportunity to come in and speak with you this evening. I'm a school resource officer in another jurisdiction, so I work in schools with children and families every day. I see the effects of trauma, poverty, divided homes, peer pressure, substance abuse, and mental health on our youth, and know that we need to offer them as many resources as our community can. I come before you this evening to make you aware of such a resource available to our children here in Rappahannock County, a resource that was once offered in our school but fell to the wayside due to lack of staffing. We now have the opportunity to bring this program back to Rappahannock County elementary schools, specifically kindergarten through fifth grade, thanks to a nonprofit organization that is willing to step up and help reach our youth who are looking for a different way to manage their feelings and thoughts. There have been numerous articles in our local newspapers within the last year alone discussing the need for trauma-informed care. One article was even titled "School Officials Scramble for Solutions as More Rappahannock Students Experience Trauma." Another article discussed the need to train citizens on trauma-informed care due to the toxic levels of stress they are experiencing in today's times. Those named as being trained already and continuing to be trained were law enforcement, teachers, social service workers, parents, et cetera. And the person that was being interviewed for the article, who was the director of the Fall Cure Mental Health Association, even mentioned that they are now reaching out to churches for support. A third article stated, titled "Connecting the Dots to Save Children's Lives", explained that 60% of students with mental health concerns do not receive treatment they need because of the stigma associated with such and the lack of access to services. The exact quote from that writer was, "Building a mentally healthy community for our children starts in our schools." So do the children in our schools need programs to instill an understanding of basic right and wrong, as well as to empower them to respect themselves and others? Of course they do, whether these programs come from character-building lessons the school counselors teach in the classrooms, or the dare curriculum that the sheriff's office teaches during their resource times. Yes, it is also a parent's responsibility to teach ethics and morals. However, let's think about it. Our kids are with schools, or in school, for almost seven hours a day away from their parents. So why could we not, at school, offer a program that can reinforce what their parents are teaching them at home? I sat in my son's seventh-grade graduation ceremony in May, and I heard where several students had been recognized for an essay contest that had been put on by the foothills forum. I reread online some of those essays to see what they were, because my son chose not to participate. One of them really stuck out to me, and it was called "Present Day Rappahannock." This student explained her views that kids today are bullied, pressured to make poor choices by their peers, and they feel their problems are ignored by adults. Her quote that stuck out to me more than anything was, "We, the adults in the community, are not doing anything to change it." So let's face it, children want to fit into a peer group. Some feel accepted by a group of students, such as athletes. Others prefer to have a group of peers that have artistic or musical skills. Some, like myself in school, wanted to be left alone. That was my happy place. I was cool with that. Others don't like that. They want to fit in, and when they don't fit in, they feel alone, and that's not a feeling they like. Sometimes, when they're alone, they will do anything to get into a group, even if they don't have the skills to do so. So they'll conform to the ideas and core choices that are thrust upon them by the bad influences they're being surrounded by, just hoping to fit in. So then, a second essay spoke of her grandfather's hardships growing up in Rappahannock and stated, quote, "But with faith and love, he and his family were able to make it work." So we have two different essays, two different views of poor times and circumstances. One student asking us to help them, and one stating that faith and love is what helped her. So why not offer those to our students? Not only is it important to prepare our children academically, but we also owe it to them to teach them how to become successful, functioning adults by living in the proper way. So the opportunity I'm referring to tonight is called "Released Time." Unfortunately, many citizens are not familiar with Released Time and believe it's the public school system forcing their child to attend educational time discussing a specific religion. Most parents argue that religion is a topic of discussion for their homes and churches where they can instill their personal beliefs and customs, and that's rightfully so. Release time is not to sway a child in one direction or another. It's simply another resource to learn how people in the past learned to overcome hard times, or how to deal with their pain or heartache, and see that tough times can be overcome. Release time is a constitutionally permissible means by which public schools release students who have parental permission to attend off-campus religious instruction. This is a completely optional Release Time, where parents give permission to allow their children to walk with an adult chaproom to a mobile space off-campus for one 45-minute period per month during the school year. This is in lieu of a resource class, such as PE, music, art, computer, et cetera, not during an SOL-based core curriculum class. Then comes the argument about the separation of church and state. The First Amendment of the United States Constitution guarantees the freedom of religion in both belief and practice under the Free Exercise Clause, and prohibits government from aiding and recognizing any religion under the Establishment Clause. So the Establishment Clause not only forbids the government from establishing an official religion, but it also prohibits government actions that favor one religion over another. This goes to speak to the citizens who are concerned that Release Time will only be teaching one religion. This law, or First Amendment, says that any group wishing to teach a religion not already being taught during Release Time can request their program to be offered, just as I am coming to you tonight and requesting for this. Case law has been established, and I did print out those reading materials because case law is very long and boring. So I did print those out. But the case law that governs Release Time is Zoric versus Clausen through the New York Supreme Court. And it says that Release Time education is constitutional under three separate factors. Those three factors are: it must be performed off-school campus. Reverend Heddleston is here to contest that he spoke to a property owner who has granted permission for us to use her space off-school property to park the trailer. So number one's covered. Number two, no public funds are allowed to be used for this. We have Mr. Bob Hope here with CVM. His nonprofit organization has agreed to fund 100%. Staffing volunteers, the trailer, the electricity, the materials, whatever is needed. The taxpayers will not be asked or expected to come up with one penny. Zero money. That was number two. The third is that it has to be parental permission, an optional program. The school system cannot promote this in any way. They cannot even send home in our Tuesday folders a permission slip. It has to be totally done by outside organizations, such as parents spreading the word, social media posts by parents or CVM, or simply coming to a back-to-school night with our own little table, just like Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts do. So I will give you those packets so you can do that. And I'll just read what those case laws state. But I'll just finish by saying that as I was researching the school board policy to figure out how I could even get up here and speak to you all, I noticed that the vision for Rappahannock County Schools stated, "To empower every student to reach his or her full potential." And your mission statement is through educational opportunities, the mission for Rappahannock County Public Schools will be to promote culture of learning, a roadmap for excellence, and the passion and character that leads to each student's success. I believe Release Time fits into both the vision and mission of Rappahannock County Public Schools. So I ask you, the board members, to consider this opportunity to enrich some of our children's lives. Thank you. If you have questions, Mr. Hope with CVM is here to answer them if you do have any questions about the program itself.
Thank you very much. Here's an opportunity to public comment following the next item on our agenda. Right now, we have... Thank you, Ms. Morris. Next item is discussion about the annual convention in November, right? I can't connect with the network to see what I was going to say. I guess there's a point very soon where we're going to need to say who's going. Yeah, so who's going? We have to grab it. You volunteered to be a devil.
No.
He volunteered to be a devil. That hurts. So, yeah, no, we, yeah. Just needed to know who's planning on going in November. So last year, there were... Who are you going to go with? Check your skin. So right now, I guess, right down north. Until... Are we staying?
We're in the rotation to stay at the lodge this year, so it's a good year to go.
Yeah, I can't remember why I was going to stay. Okay, is there a room? Yeah, we sit with guys. That's fine. Can you guys speak, though? Yeah, yeah, we can. It's... All right, thank you. Getting this close. It's hard to remember to get this close. That's all. Sorry. So we're discussing, every year in November, there's an annual school board conference in Williamsburg. And we're discussing the attendance at that and the staying at the lodge. So typically, it's a very long day, the single day where the majority of what's happening is happening. And typically, we leave, if we go down just for the Thursday event, we leave here at 6:00 AM. Like 6:00 AM, 5:30 in the morning, and correct, 5:30. And then we get back after dinner. It's just a really long day. And so the discussion was about whether we stay at the lodge for the Wednesday night, travel down on Wednesday in St. Louis. That's the current plan. Okay, so that's our plan at this point. Two of us are in a car at any one time.
Let's break a chug.
Let's break a chug, in which case, we can all go together. I'll tell you a story. They knew all of them. And I looked down at the funny, and he said, "I'm going to go there." Yeah, and so we're not, there's things, there's things we're not comprehensive. Yeah, we're not comprehensive. All right, so that's kind of our plan. Okay with that plan at this point? We have enough rooms.
So I have two rooms.
Yeah, two rooms. So we can have a boy room and a girl room. You want? See, I go down the morning. And last year, too, if you remember, there was an issue with the weather. And, right, and so we weren't even sure we were going to see Larry and Bud because we went down the night before when we heard that the weather was coming. Right? Remember that? That's why we decided, that's why we decided. All right, stick with the plan. All right, moving on to public comments. If you'd like to address the board this evening, if you would, just wave your hand, come up to the podium, state your name, your district. Can you hear me okay? Anybody?
Can I see you the material?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, that'd be great.
And I also included a copy of Colpepper County's cover. Gave me a copy of theirs to use as a template if the program is...
And can someone speak to our neighbors, our neighbor counties that are implementing a similar Release Time plan?
I know currently, Colpepper has it at all of their six elementary schools. Page County has it, Madison Green, and Orange.
Okay, thank you very much. Does anyone would like to speak this evening?
I'm John, I'm John Heddleston. Is this working?
I think you gotta get like this close.
Oh, we gotta do directional mic. John Heddleston from Stonewall Hawthorne District. My family's lived here for inspiring over 35 years. I remember when this CVM bus thing was in Rappahannock, here at the elementary school, for many years, while some of us were teachers here. About that time, I, being biblically illiterate, was asked at a church I was attending to teach Sunday School. And they said, "Well, you're a teacher at the high school in Rappahannock. You'll be able to run the lessons. We'll give you a book." And I discovered also that some of the little children I had in my classes already knew the stories from the Bible that I didn't know. As a teacher then, and with the help of some of those students, I discovered what an incredible book the Bible is, and some of the greatest stories ever alluded to constantly in our literary history are in the Bible. And these are the kinds of stories that children are here when they have the Release Time and get to go, with the permission of their parents, of course. And so it's a safe program, I think in light of what we just went through, the second anniversary, what happened in Charlottesville a couple of years ago, what happened in Texas last weekend, Ohio. These things, we need a concerted, well-rounded effort. And I think we need all hands on deck to help people to love one another more, to love one another better, to deal with depression and suicidal tendencies, and to hear some of the greatest stories ever told. From an educational standpoint, I used to tell parents when they came to parent-teacher conference in my classroom, "Your children are juniors. They're going to take the SOLs. Get a King James Bible, go through it." He said, "King James Bible?" I said, "I'm not going to tell you to read it. I'm going to tell you to go through and highlight every word that you don't know what it means." Highlight it, have your child learn that, and they are going to improve their score in the SAT vocabulary section. Several took me up on that. One said, "Oh, there were four words, Mr. Heddleston, that I learned from the Bible on that test." And I said, "Only four?" And she said, "Oh, it exponentially raised my SAT score." So there are things, so many times, I sat in classes, even college, not understanding Shakespeare and other literature. Being an English major, the allusions to the Bible are constant. And so to have the opportunity for little children to learn things that even some of their teachers and parents don't know, to have the permission to have it done legally, people who really love the kids, just like you do, is a wonderful thing. So I hope Rappahannock will vote to reinstate this CVM ministry. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Anyone else? Hey, you know, we're all enjoying the sound of rain, and Robin is looking at the ceiling. All right. Anyone else? So typically, when the board hears something, we wink. Now, we wink gives us some time to listen to the public, gives us some time to consider implementation. And so we'll be considering the program over the coming month, which we're about to make.
Can I respond?
Yes, ma'am.
I think what was presented here tonight was spot-on. In fact, I'd probably be a little more worried about infringing parental rights for a Release Time program like this. We do have a policy in place where this is, we do have policy in place that does reserve the rights of all parents to release their children for religious studies anyway. And we do have students taking part in that of different religions now.
Yeah, so I was just thinking about logistics, you know, we've got to manage this thing and the safety of this thing. So, good. All right, anyone else this evening? Yes, ma'am.
You can't, I don't think you can hear me here. Back up, babe. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, but I don't think they can.
Well, they can't, I can't hear you think anybody's saying, sitting here. I need the way I'll come up there.
Thank you.
You know I don't want them like.
It's, I know, but I don't need listening.
I was praying.
Wow. I want everybody to sit right here, that's what I want, right here. Talk, talk close, Ailey. Talk close. I saw the way it worked, right here.
Okay, can you hear me?
Closer, closer.
Look at your mouth.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
I didn't know this was going to be on tonight, about the bus. When I was here at the time, when the bus was here, I never heard anything, the good things about it, and parents talked about it, and nothing but good things. I think it's a good way to start a day, and I think too that, and I wondered what happened to it when it left. So I didn't know whether, I never heard it complexly, just one of the good things. And everything that John was saying, I was agreeing with, but I couldn't hear too much of what he was saying. What I heard, what I heard, I agree with.
If you hear John talk, you agree with him anyway.
That's right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Anyone else this evening? All right. We have no action items this evening. Moving on to new business, is there new business? Our next school board meeting, I don't have a calendar.
September 10.
September 10 is our next school board meeting, 6:30 at the hospital. Correct?
We might.
With new audio. Yes. All right. Okay, at this time, we're going to have a motion, go to closed session. Once we have that motion and seconded and moved, we'll take a short recess so we can say goodnight to you, and then we'll come back, come back to closed session once we have the chance to say goodnight. By the way, once we come out of closed session, which is going to take 15 minutes, if you cared to stay, we'll come back in the open session for personnel report and a motion related to personnel. So if you cared to wait in the hall during closed session, that's about how long you'll have to wait. Can you hear me? Good? Nodding's good. Appreciate the nod. Okay, so, Mr. Grove has a motion.
I move the board convene in closed session for the following purposes: to discuss, consider the appointment of staff members to professional and classified positions, resignation to professional positions, FMLA request, and discussion of the superintendent's hold pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2 that 3711A1.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Mubin. What a favorite, I. So we're going to have recess, give you time to run into the hallway or go watch the rain. Wish you had your umbrella.
We'd like to see our sensory pathway out here.
We're seeing the sensory pathway. She's always on the box. There you go.